Good evening, everyone. I want to respect everyone's time and start on time, and it's exactly 6 o'clock. So if everyone can have a seat, we're going to go ahead and start the joint candidates forum for school board that has been presented by CSMA, VEA, and CSCA. So on behalf of the teachers, Sheila Gradwell, we have Kimberly Mitchell Lewis, who is here for VSMF, and Mike Rhodes for CSCA. So yay to all the employees who have worked together to get this up and working. So I am going to... So the way that this is going to work is that every candidate is going to have one minute to introduce themselves. Then each one of the union groups went ahead and put together a question, which each candidate will have two minutes to answer. After that, there will be a closing for one minute. For the candidates, if you see in front of you, there's a screen with a time on it, that will keep track of your time. You need to self-monitor your time so that you know that your time is up. You will have a little bit of leeway if you go a little bit over, but after that time, your mind will be shut off. So Lucius is right there, and he is watching that time as well. He will be making sure you won't have any warnings, other than making sure you watch that screen, there's no sound or anything. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce each one of the candidates. We have eight candidates for three school board seats. And we're very thankful that all eight have shown up here today, so that you can all hear who these people are who are running. So we will go ahead and start at the end over here. Our first candidate is Alan Yip, and we'll go ahead and let him introduce himself.
Hi. My name is Alan Yip. Just a little quick file, I grew up in Vallejo. I attended Vallejo Schools, Public Schools, K-12, Danning Salado Little, and Vallejo High in 1989. I went away to college. I've worked in finance for an investment bank, Verlins, for 10 years, and then now I'm the chief financial officer for a private company. I came back to Vallejo, look after my parents. I got married. I have two children, a wife. I'm also the coach for my fifth-grade girls volleyball team. You know, I'm on the school district budget committee. I've been looking at the district's finances for the last several years, and I hope to, you know, help this district turn around. Thank you.
And next, the wait's done, nine seconds to spare. Thank you. Rusko Kayangyung is our next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Rusko Kayangyung, your school board member for almost four years. Having grown up in Vallejo most of my life, I have attended Vallejo Public Schools. Since starting on the Vallejo School Board almost four years ago, I was appalled of the condition it was in. I'm one of the few board members who hold office hours and meet with students, parents, and employees and community to understand their critical needs. While serving as school board president, I've supported many positive changes, from a budget committee to stop wasteful spending, make sure we get money back into the classroom, to working with the community to hold town hall meetings, to solve problems, to having our school board meetings more accessible to you, the people. I've advocated your concerns at school board meetings, and as your school board member, I'll continue to strongly fight for you. My name is Rusko Kayangyung. I'll be on your way to vote. I'll lead our district with dignity and professionalism. Thank you.
And perfect manner. Ryan Masano.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Masano. I too, like many here, grew up in the Vallejo schools. I happen to be the oldest of 18 children, so not only did I grow up in the Vallejo schools, but many of my siblings did as well. What I saw here really enchanted me, and even though the fact is that yours truly was not a graduate of the Vallejo School District, I did go on, and because the Vallejo District was so good, I went into the Vallejo, into the nuclear navy aboard nuclear submarines. I believe that failure is an event, not a person, and that a setback is a setup for a comeback. I also think that that's an attitude that we're going to need here in Vallejo, with the school district and some of the challenges that we face. And so I look forward to earning your vote, to be able to help turn things and return them to the academic excellence we once knew here in Vallejo.
Great, thank you, Ryan. John Fox.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Fox, and I've been a public educator for now going on 21 years. I currently teach third grade. I've taught second grade through sixth grade, reading intervention teacher. I also have my administrative credential, which I've used in the summer and one year similar to a vice principal. Here in Vallejo, the 18 years I've been here, I've been on boards and involved in my community all 18 years. I'm currently on four boards here in Vallejo. I know how to work on a board, and each of the boards I'm on are financially solvent, which is big here for this district. Going to the school board meetings, probably at least three years now, watching the culture and being part of it, I've been almost at every school board meeting, speaking at the school board meetings. I know the issues, and I want to bring my experience of 20-some years as an educator to the board as a voice for all members of the district. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you. And Dr. Tony Uvaldi.
Oh, my goodness, honey. I have to grow up. Thank you for being here this evening. My name is Tony Uvaldi. I'm a retired pastor and professor, and I have also served in the community in a very, very broad ways with the area, agency, and agent for 60 years, and Vallejo Police Chaplain for 24 years. And I was not going to run this year, but I could not in good conscience leave the board the way it is. And so I decided to come back to be helpful and strengthen the board. And the second part is that I also wanted to continue the programs that I have initiated. Now it's building trades. I re-initiated with adult ed, and now it's moving to Kate from high school this coming year. And the other thing I want to do is help develop the computer science program that I have been working with the superintendent and so with the director, McCalver. Thank you.
Thank you. Berkey World.
Thank you. My name's Berkey World. I've lived in Vallejo all my life. Went to school here. I was a police officer in the city of Vallejo for 30 years. I was on the school board from '93 to '01. From '01 to '14, I made probably 90% of the meetings, and since '14, I've been back on the school board. I decided to run again because I'm afraid what might happen depending on who gets elected. We have an excellent superintendent right now. Some people on the board do not work with him, do not support him, and like I said, I'm afraid depending on some people might get elected, he will be gone within two years, which will be a very big loss for this school district.
Thank you. Tony Gross.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Tony Gross, and I'm a resident of Vallejo, 30-year resident. I've worked in this school district for 25 years, and I've been retired for the last five. I'm running for the school, I'm running for school board for one main reason, is that is that I want to see all of our students in this district, in this city succeed and become successful. Like I say, I worked for them for 25 years. My job isn't done. I haven't seen that to fruition yet, so I figured I would come back to the board, work with the board. I agree with the, with the goals and the missions and the values of the school board, so we need to get on that train to move forward. I want to stop the exodus of people out of our district. I want to bring them back into our district. So thank you, and my name is Tony Gross. I'm running for school board.
Thank you, Tony, and Kristi Gardner.
Hi, my name is Kristi Gardner, and I started my educational career here in Vallejo 25 years ago. I worked in the district for seven years, five years as a classroom teacher, and two years as an administrator at Vallejo High School. I then accepted a job in Woodland and worked in the Woodland Unified District for 11 years as a vice principal at their high school, and worked to create smaller learning communities and instituted freshman academies. After I received my master's in educational leadership, I went to the state and worked at the Department of Education in two separate divisions, the charter school division and the career technical education division, where I worked mostly with compliance issues. I'm glad to be here tonight. I will work tirelessly for you. My name is Kristi Gardner, and as you can see, I'm the only woman running for school board. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the slate of candidates that we have for school board, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mike. He will be asking questions. So each association picked a question, and that is what we're going with. So thank you all.
Why is this stand so short? So first, I'd like to thank you people for helping us get this ready tonight. Jorge Rubacava, is that how you pronounce his name? He's the band teacher here. He's very helpful, and I appreciate it. And Dr. Michelle Jordan Fawcett, thank you very much for using your facility. They went out of their way to help this happen, so I appreciate that. So I just want the candidates to know that if there's a certain question that they, that they don't like, and they get elected, it probably wasn't, didn't come from CSCA. That's all I want to say, okay? Okay, so the first question is, do you support charter schools? And what actionable step will you take to improve our district? Go ahead and start with Alan Yip.
Let me answer this in two parts. Do I support charter schools? Yes. But the question everybody needs to ask is, why are charter schools in our district? The problem isn't the charter school. The problem is VCUSD. Charter schools have been run since 1992. If this district was a better-performing district, we wouldn't have an issue with the charter schools. Now, why are so many parents and children have left the district? That's the question that needs to be asked. The only way to beat charter schools is to have a better district. Now, I've toured MIT and Caliber. MIT has the worst facilities of all the schools in Vallejo, yet their kids are learning, the environment is stable, kids feel loved and safe. So the question really is, why are VCUSD schools not performing to the level of these charter schools? Now, what would I do to improve VCUSD? One, you need to bring back academic achievement. Most engaged parents have left. I've spoken to numerous teachers. Ninth-grade students are reading at a fifth-grade level. That should be unacceptable. As teachers, you should be outraged that students in the ninth grade are reading at a fifth-grade level. Two, student safety. Students have to feel safe and feel loved. And three, financial stability. Nobody talks about this. The district is facing a $13 million deficit. I'm the CFO of my company. One of the reasons I'm the CFO is because people know the buck stops with me. I'll ask the hard questions. I'm not going to rubber stamp whatever the district management wants. It's a $13 million deficit you're facing. If we don't fix the finances for this school district, nothing else will matter. Thank you.
Rusko Kayangyung.
I have concerns about the future charter schools that have applied to our school district and coming our way. And in order to beat that, in order to prevent them from coming, we need to fix the issues in our school district. Safety, attracting and retaining our employees, academic achievement, and making our school district financially sound. In terms of attracting and retaining our employees, we need to provide as much support to our teachers and staff. We need to improve their pay. I have a record of voting down wasteful spending, as well as pay raises for managers, because I recognize we need to invest in our teachers and our classified staff. Also, we have to make, ensure our schools are safe for our students and all of our employees. Whenever issues arise in the classroom or in the school site, we need to ensure administration backs up our teachers, our site safety, our secretaries, and even our bus drivers. And third, I'm not satisfied with the low academic achievement. We have students that are performing below grade level, especially our 11 graders. While serving as school board president last year, I worked with a community organization to bring forth their findings, as well as their solutions of how to tackle the achievement gap. We must work with all stakeholders, from community organizations to our employees, to ensure our students are well-supported, and you don't have to worry about these forthcoming charter schools. Thank you.
Ryan Masano.
Thank you. And there were portions of both Alan and Rusko's responses that I agree with. When Alan said that the VCUSD's performance is what necessitates currently the charter schools, I agree. When Rusko talked about improving school safety, I agree with that as well. And as for charter schools, I do think that competition is going to be a healthy thing for us. If the performance in the VCUSD is improved, then I don't think we have anything to worry about with competition. Excellence breeds excellence. Birds of a feather flock together. So when the, when there's no vision in the land, the people perish. So there has to be a leader with vision, who understands how to succeed short-term, as well as long-term. Part of, we've gone from 24,000 students in the Vallejo School Districts in the '90s down to 12,000. So anyone who would do math understands you're not going to get the same amount of money for 12,000 students as you did for 24,000. That's a societal issue that the schools aren't responsible for, but needs to be addressed. Also, one of the issues, this is a big societal issue, is that a lot of the students here, these are behavioral issues and academic issues, we're dealing with fatherlessness. Now, that's not our job here. No one's job unless you're a father, and this room is not our job. But it is a societal issue that does play a part. The more attention is given to it, the better, more it will improve. Also, 30% of the 12th graders right now are graduating at the 12th grade level in, proficient in 12th grade level in math and English. That's completely unacceptable. The job of a school is to make sure that the student can go out into society and can thrive in the work environment. And so unless we're willing to put, you know, our minds to this and fix this problem, the other thing is historical comprehension is woefully low. I mean, some of the kids that are coming out, what they know and don't know, it's frankly frightening to see them going into the voting booth. That needs to be improved, and that is something that is completely unacceptable and will be changed under my watch.
John Fox.
All right, as I said, I've been a public school teacher for going on 21 years, so I support public education. And I feel public education can do just as good as a job with charters, if not better. First, I want to say, last night at the county office of education, I am rejoicing that Rocketship got denied. Second, coming next week, or coming soon, there is another charter school coming that will skim another $10 million out of our public schools, our taxpayer money. We have $12 to $13 million to cut in our own budget, plus another $10 million. That is closing schools. That is laying off staff. So I hear people on this stage talking about competing. I ask you, and I ask them, how can you compete when you do not have any funds and your funds are being taken away from you? You cannot compete. You cannot have programs. You cannot be on the cutting edge. Some of these charter schools are LLCs, corporations from across the United States. They have zero investment in Vallejo. They don't care about our city. They care about money from our children. Also, a lot of them skim some of the top performing students off of our classes, out of our schools. So there again, I have another question for the public and people up here on this stage. If some of our best or some of our diverse students that are being taken out to a charter school, how are we going to compete? How are we going to support the ones that are left behind? How we support the ones that are at risk, the ones that I work with every day? Those are some tough questions, and I want to help protect our public schools.
Thank you. Dr. Uvaldi.
Thank you, Michael. I have always been opposed to charter school. I have voted them down, left tonight. Part of that is it's a form of escapism, form of running away from the reality of life. And so I cannot in good conscience allow that to happen. And I was so thrilled last night, when I got a message in my email that Rocketship was denied. Seven-zero unanimously by that, by SCOE. And I was one of those lobbying, talked to my colleagues in the county office to defeat them, because labor asked me to do so. Now, I trust, my colleague here, John Fox, said it so well, so I will not repeat many of the issues and observations that he has made about the charter school. Let me say steps to improve our district, Michael. Graduation rate was 55% when I came on, two, uh, seven years ago. Now it is 72.3. Financial security is intact. Part of that is we made a lot of sacrifices, but without cutting support to the classroom and the staff. It's a safer school district. We have brought in new leadership, superintendent and new CDOs. The other thing that is new is that we have brought in the trades for the adult ed. We began with the trades with the adult ed. We had 30 students about eight months ago. 15 of them graduated, and you know, 15 of them are now in apprenticeship program. And you know how much those folks will be making when they get out? $15,000 to $80,000 dollars a year, and these are our students. And now we will be bringing that to our high school. And the other thing I want to bring to you is the digital program. Thank you.
Berkey World.
Thank you. I was at the county meeting last night when they voted down Rocketship. It had a very poor plan. But what was interesting was, one of the trustees, Ms. Sharp, made the statement she knew somebody who used to live in Vallejo and moved out because of our schools. Another trustee up there, Marion Bates, said, "Public schools need to quit whining about the charter schools, because they are not taking money away from public education." I don't understand where she got that from. They do take a lot of money away from us. Those who say charter schools make competition, they do not understand and have not read that the laws for charter schools are different than they are for the public schools. Charter schools can do a lot of things different than we can. Charter schools, do they have, do they have to maintain a football field like we do? No. Do they have to maintain gymnasiums like we do at our high schools? No. They rent it from us, which means they don't have to take care of it. That's what a lot of people don't understand. They also take more cream of the crop students than they do those that have problems. They have very, very few special ed students that have large problems. So yes, by and large, charter schools do do better, but the state has finally come to realize that the rules need to be changed, and it need to be made more of a level playing field between the public schools and the charter schools.
Thank you. Ralph Tony Gross.
Thank you. Well, about charter schools, let me kind of give you a little history. Back, and as I said earlier, in the '90s, the president of AFT, Al Shanker, was, got the notion that all of, all of our students in a particular district had, they're, we have all individuals, they all have different needs. Generally speaking, a schoolhouse, a school building can, can meet the needs of many of the kids that it has to serve, that it has to serve. But there were also a population of kids who couldn't be served through regular traditional educational motifs. So he got together, and his intentions were, and Jeremy Brown did when he was the governor, when he was the mayor of Oakland, to bring in alternative educational systems within the public school system. Al's idea, and mine too, is never to come into a already poor school, school district, or a school district that does have its finances in good shape, to just take money away for whatever reason, to school some kids or take kids away. You're going to take that money, and that depletes it on one side. You can't, you can't give the services you need to these kids, and on the other side, you, you have unregulated educational services to another group of kids. What I, what I would like to do is, we need to leverage the ideas of what are these charter, what are these charter promising? What are they saying they're going to do? And we need to see, as a, as a public institution, do we meet those needs? Can we fulfill those promises? Is, are those realistic for us to do? But we can do this within the current system of public education that we now have in America. So we don't need any additional levels of education that are not going to bring what we can do.
Thank you. Kristi Gardner.
Thank you. As I stated in my introduction to myself, I've worked at the charter schools division at the Department of Education for the state. And one of my job responsibilities was to review petitions that petitioners had submitted that had been denied at both the district and the county level for establishment of a school. And so my job was to evaluate the petitions, make a recommendation to the state board to see whether or not they wanted to authorize them and serve as the authorizing agent for them. I have to say that the number of charter school petitions that I read, the vast majority were not good programs. But there were a couple very good programs. Charter schools have been in existence since 1992, and there is a, a process that they need to go through when you are authorizing them, and as the authorizer, where you hold them accountable to what they're say, what they say they're going to do in their petitions. As an authorizing agent, the district could very well do this if by chance we came across an excellent petition that came across our desk. It would be more preferable for us to authorize that school, if it is a good school, than to have the county authorize it and be an authorizing agent in our district. We would want more control, I would think. I would want more control over those good charter schools and be a good authorizer for those charter schools. Currently, I'm not sure that the district acts appropriately as the authorizer of Mayor Island Technology or Caliber. Charter schools really are held to a higher accountability standard, in that they are only approved for a five-year term, and then the district authorizing can control whether or not that, that school continues. On charter school neutral, my name is Kristi Gardner, and I have a lot of information on charter schools I'd like to share with you.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Kristi, we're going to start with you this time, okay? So we want to give everybody else a chance. Alan down here, I don't want to pick on him, may I have him? Be the first to speak. Anyway, so there's a teacher shortage across the nation. In addition, Vallejo has unique challenges, including lower pay than surrounding districts. What would you do to make working in Vallejo more competitive and make it easier to attract and retain qualified teachers, administrators, and staff?
This is a problem for everyone. It's hard to attract teachers in specific areas, more in the science and math, more so than in other areas. What I would do is look at the compensation and make sure that the compensation was equitable to the surrounding districts. Another thing that I would do is forge partnerships with universities, in-state universities and perhaps out-of-state universities. A lot of people want to move to California, and we're located in the Bay Area with beautiful climate and a great community. We could, we could recruit teachers out of state and then work with them to get their California credentials, and have our own relationship with these California credentials and have our own relationship with these colleges to recruit those, those students right straight out of college. We can do the same with state schools. Sonoma State is right down the road. We could forge a partnership with Vallejo Community College, they, or the Salado Community College, they already have a partnership with the liberal studies department. We could forge one also with the education department and make sure that we have programs in place in Vallejo where they could continue their education in Vallejo to get their teaching credential. We can do the same thing with administrators. We could recruit administrators from other institutions around, make sure that the pay is equitable, and we could also recruit administrators from, from educational leadership programs, from state colleges, and from colleges that are out of state. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Tony Gross.
Thank you, Mike. Well, uh, like I said, I've worked in this district for the last twenty-five years and as retired person, five years, so thirty years total. And I've kind of been victimized by the fact that our pay isn't comparable to many districts surrounding us. So what I would do to attract people, and one of the reasons I stayed, is that we, when I came into this district, we had a tremendously effective professional development department, one of the best in the, in the United States, outstanding. I, I say to you this, that, that although, and we all know in education that you don't go in it for the money, but you do expect to have decent working standards and working environment. And like I say, I, I, I think if we, and Kristi said it too, I think if we do more outside recruiting, we look at colleges in and outside the state of California, but not, not only that, once you bring somebody here, you have to keep them satisfied, satisfied in being here and staying here. I've seen many teachers come, I've seen many teachers go. Now, what keeps them here, or what keeps you in a job, is the feeling that that job appreciates you and you appreciate it. Again, our professional development department could, could do a lot in sustaining that, that our, those staff members by keeping them up to date, by keeping them trained. And, and I want to make this real clear, I'm not talking about just teachers. In our district, we have teachers, we have people who work on the ground, we have technology folks, we have people who work with the budgets, we have personnel, we have bus drivers, cuts. All of these people need to be trained on a constant basis all the time. Your, your humanness in this district is something that needs to be recognized all the time, always, because that's all we have. We're humans working with other humans, okay? Sorry.
Thank you. Berkey World.
There's two issues here. One is the state, we're not the only one that has money problems. Those who say it's all Vallejo, you're living someplace that's not real. A lot of school districts in this state, in this country, have money problems. Part of our problem is we cannot put as much money to pay because we have to fix up our facilities. We tried to do that this year with a bond measure, and it would have only taken fifty-five percent of the voters to approve it, but trustee Kinyang Yang and trustee Kearney Brown did not vote for that. So I brought it back the next week for reconsideration. Neither one of them would vote to reconsider it. Finally, I talked with the superintendent and brought it back a third time to where it would take sixty-six percent of the people to pass it. Then we got four to one. Trustee Kinyang Yang still did not vote for it. He believes we have too much of a financial problem, but him and those that say that do not understand how bond money works. Measure A worked fine, even through the period where the district was taken over by the state. There was absolutely no problem with the Measure A money. People may not have liked what the priority was, but none of that money was spent inappropriately. And anybody who does say that, you need to bring that evidence forward and take it to either the district attorney or the grand jury. You cannot do that, so you will not do that. You will just keep saying Measure A money was spent wrong.
Thank you. Dr. Yovaldi.
I'm going to be Mr. Muscle here pretty soon. This thing is way up top. Okay, uh, teacher shortage. This is a national issue. This is, does not just an issue that Vallejo has to face. And part of it is that we are not as competitive, we're not able to be, compete because of our salary rate. I feel that we need to also work with the state commission, I don't know what the name of that she is, that deals with, with their certification, credential, that they need greater flexibility and open to other possibilities, other talents that can come before us. There are many talented people that can get credential, but we're limiting that from the state level. We have competition from the business, many, that's why we like math teachers, we like English teachers, we like history teachers, because of various other competitions. I think we need to develop a greater and positive culture in us, in our community. We need to create better working environment and, and do, offer the respect that they are due. And I think that's, that has begun with our new superintendent. The other thing that I, I need to be, we need to be conscious of is that there are also other places to recruit teachers. We have sometimes, uh, what's the name of the, when you want to get a job, you click into that and, and?
Airjoin.
What's that? Airjoin. You know who they recruit? They recruit from Stanford and Cal and, and all these big-name schools, and they ignore that there are other schools such as the Salado, such as East Bay, San Francisco, and so on and so forth. That is limited because that's what they do. The other thing is, we are creating, as our students graduate, we are creating international students. We're not just limiting them to here in the United States. We need to recruit people from the international community also. Thank you.
Thank you. John Fox.
As has been said, the teacher shortage is nothing new to Vallejo. It's nothing special to Vallejo, it's across our country. Between teachers and police, there's a shortage here in Vallejo and across the nation. It's because they're not respected, they're not paid well. Our community here in Vallejo, we have people that write to our paper, that bash our Vallejo schools continually. And this negative attitude needs to stop. Even we have elected officials at the school board, some within city's council or their families, that promote negative feelings of Vallejo, not positive feelings of Vallejo, negative, everything that's wrong, until we get the community to start volunteering in our schools, coming and seeing what's going, happening in our schools, what's positive and working in our schools, that's going to help support our teachers and want our teachers to stay. Let's talk about something else. Would you work in a school, or at a job, any job, where you come in every day and the roof is leaking? Would you come to work every day if their HVAC, HVAC, air conditioning and heat, did not work? Would you or your students or employees be able to do their work? No. Who would want to stay in that environment? Who would want to put their children in that environment? So until we start taking care of our facilities and updating them so people want to work here and come to work in the environment, which will promote learning, we're in trouble. But it starts with the community, and we have to have that perception change. No more negative, no more beating down our schools. Start showing solutions, start showing up where your mouth is to help fix our schools and give positive ways. Be a role model. Thank you.
Ryan Maschanal.
So with this question, a little bit of perspective. So in nineteen twelve, we could go online, there's a test, eighth grade examination for eighth graders in Ohio, and these students, before we had an income tax in America, which we got in nineteen thirteen, these students in the eighth grade performed far better on this eighth grade examination than most of today's college graduates do. Now, as many in this room know, the biggest business in America right now is student debt at about one point five trillion dollars. This is a massive cost that right now, when we're trying to gain teachers, and every teacher is required to have a college gra, uh, college education, it's a wonderful thing that the people who have actually achieved that, I cannot, that's a great skill to have, and it's great to exert oneself to do that. However, the question we have to ask ourselves, if the internet and the library are available for free and the skills that are taught in college can be learned on one's own, is there, this is a perspective question, is there some sort of test, a merit-based test, that we can give that people with perhaps the same skills would be allowed to become teachers as well? If we were able to do something like that, we would vastly increase the teaching pool and perhaps solve our problem for less of a price. That's one idea. Uh, but obviously, the taxpayers are not going to be fond to see their taxes go up. That's an obvious that we have to keep in consideration. Uh, growing the government is not going to be very popular at all. Most people want to, you know, keep it as small as possible. We were able to actually accomplish quite a bit in the schools with quite a bit, a bit less money a little while ago. Uh, also considering too, if we look back in American history, and the argument will be made that we're in a different day and age, but Carnegie, Giannini founded Bank America, Lincoln, Washington, no college. And yet if you read their writing, uh, their writing and their comprehension skills are far superior to, I would say, ninety-nine percent of today's college graduates. So I think thinking outside the box may give us solutions that would lead us to places we could not otherwise go. Thank you.
Thank you. Roscoe Kinyang.
Thank you. Our employees, our teachers, our classified staff are the heart of our school district and helping our students succeed, and I have several ideas. First, we must increase teacher and classified staff pay and benefits. I'm one of the few board members who, who has not understand whatever comes before me, voting down pay raises for management and voting down outrageous wasteful spending like consultants. That needs to be invested in our teachers and in our classified staff. I've met with our, with our employees over the last several years, and I understand their critical needs, such as meeting with the maintenance workers to, and, and their plea of, "We need more maintenance people." If we had a, a strong team of board members who continue to vote down wasteful spending and return the money back into maintenance, back into our teachers and classified staff, we would have, we would attract more and good employees to our school district. Second, we need to work with our colleges to offer teaching credential programs and, and make sure these programs are free for, for our teachers, as well as bring back the renowned professional development programs this school district was known for. This should be free to, to our employees. Third, we need to work with the city of Vallejo on applying for community block grants to assist with employee housing. We have rising housing costs in addition to rising bridge tolls and city and water rates. Uh, we need to help our employees with the cost of living. And lastly, uh, having, one of the few board members who hold office hours and have met with employees to understand their complaints and concerns, and whenever they file complaints, they're, they're usually following in deaf ears. We need to fix the complaint process and ensure no one gets retaliated. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Yi.
At the end of the day, every teacher, of course, wants to be paid more. And you know, the question is how are we going to attract teachers and keep them? One, yes, we will pay them more. Two, we have a hundred and forty million dollar budget for thirteen thousand students. The question isn't whether or not the money is there. The question that needs to be asked is, do we budget properly for this district? Now, the state honor has already come out with numerous reports. One was that the business services offices hires consultants to do the jobs of employees. That's a wasteful spending. You could easily cut off ten million dollars from that district office. Two, if you compare Vallejo to other surrounding districts, Fairfield has five hundred more teachers and about eight thousand more students, yet their district office is a third smaller than Vallejo's. And yet nobody can still explain to me why we haven't had more of a shrinkage in the district office. You know, we start talking about the budget because it is related to teacher pay. You know, one of the things that I found quite interesting serving on the budget advisory committee, and all these, you know, people running for the board talks, talk about, "Oh, let's, you know, let's volunteer," and what have you done for the community? Well, here's what I've done. I've joined the budget advisory committee, and I've looked at their finances. I've corrected mistakes on the school district's budget where they call these surplus of deficit. Now, I've answered all the questions from the various unions, and I actually posted my answers online, if you can go take a look at it. I hope that all the other candidates do the same, because at the end of the day, if we want to pay teachers more, we have to budget properly, and we don't do that. We can cry about the state not giving us enough money, but here's the deal, at the end of the day, it's circle of influence, circle of concern. I can't control what the state is doing, but I can control whether we're going to budget properly or not. Thank you.
Um, thank you. So, the last question is that other districts are using our school board meetings to teach their board members what not to do. Could you give me one example how you can contribute to a successful board? Alan Yi. Time to rest.
I've attended these board meetings for several years. I don't bring my children to these board meetings. We don't act professional, there's a basic lack of decorum. It's okay to disagree with one another. But the way some of these board members talk to each other, if somebody talked to my mom like this, we'd have problems. At the end of the day, you just need to understand that it's okay to disagree with one another, but we have to be polite. One, from what I've read of the CSBA, which is the, you know, state board bylaws, we're not following a lot of bylaws. Apparently VCUST has been doing the wrong things for so long, we don't even know what the right things are do, are, are to do anymore. VCUST took a poll of registered voters, sixty percent of the voters said if they have children in Vallejo, they do not attend Vallejo Public Schools. Think about that, sixty percent of registered voters said their children do not attend Vallejo Public Schools. How can we expect these parents to enroll their kids in our district when we act like this in board meetings? I, and at the end of the day, you just have to be polite with one another. It's okay to disagree with one another, but you just have to be polite. Thank you.
Thank you. Roscoe Kinyang.
Thank you. When I was serving as school board president, one of my first goals in the beginning was to finally restore order to our meetings. I received many complaints from the community, from employees to even parents, they don't want to come to the school board meetings because of how unprofessional and the lack of decorum that has occurred, even before when I started. So, uh, wh, whenever I opened up the school board meetings as president, I would usually read reminders of decorum and, and how, how the meeting should be run. That, that sets a tone and rules for the meeting to ensure everybody acts professional and be a positive example for our students. I've also served on the school board governance committee to set up much-needed norms and protocols to have functional board meetings. We, we just simply need to uphold what the governance committee has, has brought before the board. Team norms such as act with professionalism and dignity, treat with each other respect, have a positive outlook on Vallejo, and more. When we set a positive tone at our meetings, it sets the example for every one of us in the school district and our community. We must uphold it. And finally, uh, whenever we interact with the public, especially at school board meetings, whenever they bring forward concerns, we must take it seriously, whether you're a student, a teacher, or a parent. You should not be retaliated or bullied for bringing forward concerns. I'm one of the few school board members who have read letters from parents, community members, employees about their concerns, and I'll continue to fight for you because that should not happen to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Maschanal.
Thank you. As anyone who has attended school board meetings or city council meetings knows, I am a model of meekness and decorum, and I am very uncontroversial, so, uh, I-
So, that said, actually, in examining myself, I understand there are things that perhaps I believe in, that there are different ways to express that. And I understand too, that no man is hated more than he who tells the truth. Now that said, if you're going to speak things that one believes in, there's a way to do so, which unfortunately, some people are going to be offended always, that just simply can't be helped. However, trying to minimize that and consider their feelings is a worthy course of action. Some of the things that I've said, if I could go back and say them over again, I would definitely say them in a different manner. I don't know that I would change the substance of them. But there's a couple of other, there's a story of a woman in China where she didn't like her father-in-law. And so, what she did, she went to a herbalist, and she told him she didn't like her father-in-law, "Could you do something?" So she said, "I want some, like, poison to give to him, and could you please give me some?" And he said, "Sure." So gave her a poison. He said, "Now, I have to warn you. When you go back to see your father-in-law, you have to be, like, extra polite to him, treat him very courteously. Do not give anybody any hint that what you're about to do is going to happen." So she did. She took that poison back, and she treated him extra special. And after a while, she began to realize that, you know what, I don't think I really want him to pass away. So she went back to herbalist, said, "You know what? I'm so sorry. You know, I actually changed my mind on this, because he's actually, I kind of like him actually now. So can you please change this poison?" And he said, "You know, I didn't give you poison to begin with. I just simply told you a different way to go about it, and now he is a different person to you." And I think that goes for all of us, and on the school board, I think that's a lesson that could definitely be used. Others generally are a reflection of ourselves in some instances. And so, changing ourselves generally changes the circumstance around us. Thank you.
Thank you. John Fox.
Well, that's a great lead-in. Poison. So, like I said, I've been going to almost every school board meeting for three to four years. I see many of you there, and I sit next to many of you in the audience. It is disgraceful to our students and to our taxpayers and the public to come and see what's happening at our school board meetings. I find it disgraceful that people on the board want a mediation firm to come work with them. I find it disgraceful that someone would sue themselves on their own board when we have such budget needs. I find it disgraceful that someone would yell over somebody, point of order, over thirty times, maybe forty times, at the last few meetings. That is no way to conduct business. That's no way to show positive role modeling to our students. As an educator, we are role models. We show how to work in teamwork, preparing our young adults to be ready for our future in society. It is shameful what we see at the school board meetings. Everything should be focused on the students, on our mission statement, on our vision. Everything should come back to those items, period. Not special agendas, which people have. My only agenda, as I've been working for twenty-one years, is to support students in public education and my peer educators. So until we find a new model and change the perception, our city of Vallejo is not going to think good of our schools. We need people in there that will be positive, will collaborate together, and be willing to find solutions that will work for Vallejo and work for our students. Lastly, I told you for the eighteen years I've been here, I've been on five boards in Vallejo. All eighteen years I've been working on boards. I currently serve on four boards. Thank you.
Dr. Uvalde. This is the last question for the evening. This is the last question. And then you will be given one minute afterwards to wrap up your summary, okay?
Okay, thank you. I think it was about a year plus when I invited a school trustee to meet with me and bring resolution to our issue. I am trained professionally to deal with conflict resolution. And I was turned down because I was said he was breaking the Bron Act. He was not breaking the Bron Act. It was not an action item. And about two years ago, we had a workshop led by CSBA, and that meeting went crazy. And next thing I know, as a member, as a board member of CSBA, I got a call saying, "What's happened? One of our staff is being criticized and want to be fired." Can you imagine? CSBA, the one who offers us the best practices, was challenged. And then, certain people go to CSBA conferences to find ways, to find issues that would lead to this, to finding out the codes, the laws, the bylaws, and more codes, to threaten board members, and finding ways that is very, very distrusting. How can a board work together when your presence is about distrust? It's not anything about healing. There's no joy at presence. So what I'm asking of you is that when you elect the three people, look for people who know what joy is about. Because if you can find someone who can express that, it just permeates throughout the community. And that's what we are. Role models. Find someone who really knows how to work with each other and really express a high priority for kids and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Berkey Royal.
Thank you for that question. I actually took steps at our last board meeting to calm them down, calm the meetings down, and you know what? It worked. I resigned as president of the board. The first part of the year, I was accused of yelling at people. After that, I was accused of bullying people. After that, it was point of order, point of order, point of order. The only way to calm it down was for me to resign. The president has no more power than anybody else. The president just runs the meeting. We all saw how the meetings were going. After I resigned, our planning commissioner, Robert Schussel, got up to speak in community form and said, quote, "I'm going to cut my comments short because Mr. World is no longer president." What does that tell a reasonable person? It was about me. It was not about the school board. But I needed to resign to calm the meetings down. And it has, that one meeting was very calm. We got out of there at, what, eight-thirty, instead of going long. So sometimes you do have to take a step back. Should I have done it? Probably not. But in doing it, did it get the desired result I wanted to see, which was to make our meetings much calmer? And hopefully, people will start coming back to the meetings. But when you have Rascal reading a letter about how terrible I am and calling out point of orders along with Mary Ann, there was nothing else I could do. Even when I overruled Mary Ann, she would still, I'd start back to point of order, point of order. The only thing to do was to resign as president. And that's what I did.
Ralph Tony Gross.
Thanks, Mike. As was previously stated, the general gist of what I've heard is that once you get on the board, once you're dealing with people, you have to respect their values, you have to respect their point of view. And then, in the case of our board, we need to make sure that there are a concrete set of norms that we are going to follow and we will subscribe to. It's real important, as all previously said, that we are role models. We do go out, and Mike said how other districts look at us and say, "Don't do it this way." These kind of embarrassing, you know, things are not something that we want to have. And I don't believe any person will, if they see this, is going to say, "But yes, I want to be a part of something that looks like it's dysfunctional or doesn't go the way it should go." You know, I think we need to sit down as board members, and Berkey said he came up with an idea of maybe making it calm by sacrificing his own position. I hope it doesn't have to get to that, but I really hope that people can get together and respect the fact that they're human beings, and they're there for one goal, and that's to make sure that they satisfy the need of all these children in Vallejo, because we always talk to about people leaving Vallejo. And I heard sixty percent don't want to come to the schools. And whether or not these percentages are real, we know that that actually happens. And it happens because of people's perception of what we do. And the fact that the board may look a particular way, and we say, "Oh, we don't like that." I think it's really important for us as board members to sit down and make those corrections. And as human beings, I know we can do it. We do it in schools all the time. We can do it at a board meeting.
Thank you. Kristy Gardner.
Thank you. I've been to a lot of different board meetings at different organizations. My old district in Woodland, I went to the board meetings constantly. At the state, I went to the board meetings on a regular basis. The board meetings I've witnessed here were appalling. A board sets the tone for the district. They set the direction for the district. And when the community sees a board act in uncivil manners, it's an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment for the community. It's embarrassment for all of the members of the board. You can agree to disagree as a board member, and you can do that in a civil way. You don't need to bait people, you don't need to argue people in front of the public. If you have issues with an individual that needs to be dealt with behind the scenes, not in front of your constituency, it was appalling, the witnessing that I, what I witnessed. I don't work that way. I work with people, and I don't always agree with the people that I work with, but I certainly would not call them out in front of my constituents. That is uncalled for. A board needs to work cohesively. They can agree to disagree, and they can remain calm and businesslike in front of their constituents. That's just civility. We need more civility in this country right now, and we certainly need it on the board. And I would work to have board retreats to get all of us on the same page, not necessarily saying the same things or agreeing to the same things, but acting civil towards one another. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now go to our one-minute closing, so each of you will have one minute to make a closing statement. I do want to switch up a little bit and start in the middle. So we will start with John Fox.
Thank you for all coming out tonight. I want to go on the board and use my twenty-one years' public school experience. I want to use my eighteen years' experience working on various boards in Vallejo. I want to use all the connections I have in Vallejo with all the organizations I volunteer and support in our wonderful city. I want to be a role model, like I am daily for my third-grade students. I want to be a role model for everyone, like Dr. Clark is. I want to work with him. I want to support him. I want to let him do his job. I'm very proud of the endorsements I've gotten. To list a few, Bob Simpion Armer, and when I asked him, he was so thrilled, saying, "Of course, John. You're my main candidate. I want you to make a difference in our schools." Quote. My other endorsements, Napa Slano Labor Council, United Democrats, Central Democrats, and I'm waiting for many more. The reason I have those endorsements is because people know I can work together and make a difference. I'd be honored for your vote. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Dr. Tony Uvalde.
You know, even though I'm a preacher, I'm not a talker. As a trustee, I am a doer because I listen. I get things done because I know how to work well with my colleagues and staff. I don't believe we need talkers. We need doers who truly believe in our students and staff. We don't need trustees who have an agenda outside of our students and staff's welfare. Please find trustees this election year who are doers, not grandstanders, rather those who believe in students and staff without ulterior agenda, like running for higher offices. Find us trustees who have joy in their hearts and not all the negativity and put-down of our school community. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Tony Uvalde. I need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berkey Royal.
Thank goodness we don't have to pass this mic anymore. I've been involved in this district now for twenty-five years, twelve of that being on the board. The three times I've been elected, I've always been amazed that there's that many people out there that believe in me. And I hope I've conveyed that being on the board. Yes, this year has been different than any other year I've been on the board, but I've worked with the employees, I've worked with the community. I don't have a large contingency behind me. I listen to the employees, I listen to the parents, I listen to the students, and that's how I make up my mind on things. I don't have a group standing behind me saying, "This is wrong, you need to do this. That's wrong, you need to do that." No, I have always tried to do what is best for the school district. If you still have that confidence in me, I would ask you to vote for me. If you don't, there's no hard feelings.
Thank you. Mr. Ralph Tony Gross.
Thank you, Cam. Like I said before, I've worked in this district. I've been involved with educating kids for thirty years. My, the only reason I'm up here is because I need to continue that work. I was in the district, you know, I love everybody who works in the district. I work with everybody in the district. I don't have an us-and-them kind of mentality. You know, it's all about what we do. You know, so I, like I say, I believe that we can work, if we move forward, we collaborate together, we share some basics, basic values and norms that we can all bring this district back to where it was many years ago. I want to bring this district back. It has to survive. It really has to survive. The biggest thing that hurts me is the exodus of people, of students, out of this district, like we all know. That's a perception, that's an action that happened because people's perception of our district is that we don't cut it. We need to improve those ideas. Oh, sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity. My experience in education at both the local level as a principal and as a teacher, and my experience at the state evaluated programs, has brought me to this point. I want to work for you and bring this district to a standard that is exemplary. We can do this here in Vallejo. There's no reason that we can't. We can work together to create a positive environment for all of our students, and I aim to do that if elected to the board. My name is Kristy Gardner. I'm the only woman running for the board, and I'd like to quote what a recent former president just said, "We need more women in charge." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alan Yee.
I care about this district. One of the reasons I'm running is that so many parents and community members ask me to look at the district's books. You know, I'm all about being positive, but the reality is that this district is in financial trouble. If you want a politician, go ahead and elect anybody else you want. If you want a problem solver, I'm your guy. I'm the CFO of my own company. When I look at the district's finances, you are in serious trouble. No matter what anybody says about positivity and perception, the reality is, this district is thirteen million dollars in the hole. If you cannot fix that deficit, this district will face more pain in the coming future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rusko Kayanya?
First, I'd like to thank the organizers for tonight's forum and thank you, the people, for being here. As your school board member, I'm one of the few, as a former student of the school district, and one of the few that holds office hours with the community to understand your needs and advocate for you at school board meetings as well as city council meetings and other community meetings because your voice matters. I give voice to the voiceless. We must, learning from the concerns from the public, we must tackle the issues of safety, academic achievement, retaining our employees, teachers and staff, and financial responsibility. I have a proven track record of working with the community from holding town hall meetings to advocating for them, advocating for solutions at school board meetings. While I'm just one board member out of five, we must elect strong leaders who will lead our school district with professionalism, have dignity, and make positive changes. My name is Rusko Kayanya. I'm the longest name on the ballot, first on the ballot, but first for Vallejo. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan Iskandar?
I too wanted to thank everybody who came out, especially the elected officials who gave up their time to come tonight. I believe that wise people learn from other people's experiences and fools have to learn from their own. I think you have to be to do, you have to do to get, we have to be a certain kind of person to get this right kind of results. Our schools do need an overhaul. Ideas attract money. Money does not attract ideas. We each need, we need to evaluate each candidate based on their individual merits, based on principles that have lasted for a long time. Time tells all tales. It's your attitude, not your aptitude, that determines your altitude. How we look at things is going to be the results that we're going to get. I was in the Navy nuclear field. I've seen academic excellence and moral uprightness. So I hope you'll join with the silent majority here in Vallejo and vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. So on behalf of V S M A, C S C A, and V, we thank you for coming tonight, and we thank you and the audience for coming tonight as well. Have a good night.